And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the Porter County Board of Commissioners' March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. We'll start with consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Approval of claims, February twentieth, February twenty-seventh, and March sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Approval of minutes, February eighteenth and March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Waits and measures, monthly report, January sixth through February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion for approval, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you, Melanie. Commissioners, uh, we have a appointments to the newly, uh, formed Citizens, uh, Ambulance Services Committee. Like to, uh, appoint, uh, Debbie Gunn.
We didn't get an application in.
No?
No, for her.
Do we need application?
We opened it up for, uh, applications. We didn't get.
Well, didn't work on a delay. Since, uh, the director of nine-one-one, in my opinion, needs to sit there. Yeah, for the, uh, for obvious reasons. So we can, we can, uh, extend this out to, to our next meeting. Unless there's some objections, open that back up to get an application. I'll take the blame for that, for not calling her up and asking her to put one in. But I, I guess because she was, she's director, I did, you know, I didn't feel that she needed to, to, to have one in.
Well, do we want to nominate the commissioner appointment at this time? Or do we want to hold that as well?
Uh, no, we can, we can go ahead.
Okay, I nominate Ed Morales for the commissioner appointment.
I'll second. We've got a nomination for Commissioner Ed Morales to, uh, be our, our board's representation on the Ambulance Services Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. Motion approved. And we'll just, uh, we'll deal with this, Melanie. Get this on our agenda for our next meeting. I'll contact, uh, uh, Ms. Gunn, uh, later today and her two applications. Opioid settlement awards recommendations. A hundred and twenty-five thousand total awarded. Megan Waschinsky presenting. Hi, Megan. How are you?
Good. How are you?
How's that baby?
Oh, he's big.
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
Do we want to also call up all of the, um, representatives of the, uh, awarded institutions?
Sure. I don't know if Marine House is here.
Okay. We're not asking them to do another presentation. We're just going to ask them to take one minute or less and just talk about the, their plan uses of these funds that we're recommending be awarded.
The only thing we ask is when you, when you speak, if you speak, is to give your name and what organization you're with. So our, we get it right in our, our, minutes. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, yes, we'd like to thank everyone for the support of this grant. Um, we, uh, received applications from ten different organizations. Uh, we invited seven to present. Um, so we feel that the five organizations listed, um, best meet, uh, our expectation and goal of this grant. Uh, so we have, uh, The Caring Place, Dunlitt Schools, Marine House, Portage Recovery, uh, and Three Twenty, uh, Recovery. Um, I'm not sure who wants to go first. Chelsea from, uh, Dunlitt School Corporation.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Branfield.
Just for, Barb, real quick, the Reader's Digest version, where this money's coming from and why do we, why we have it?
Okay, so there is a, there are several lawsuits against a number of pharmaceutical companies and retail pharmaceutical institutions like CBS, Walgreens, and so forth. And these are opioid, uh, settlement funds that have been awarded to the state. And then the state has awarded them to the different counties. And we are, uh, as we established this particular committee, we passed a resolution and we have funding, not equally every year funding, but it's kind of up and down and up and down through two thousand and thirty-eight. And so basically, we looked at the amount of funding that we were going to get through two thousand and thirty-eight, and we divided it by fourteen so that we knew roughly how much we could safely distribute over those fourteen years, and that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we did form a committee of five individuals, one commissioner, two from the county council, and two citizen appointments. And Megan, as the only unelected official, was nominated to be the president of the committee. And she's done just a tremendous job, and I want to thank you so much, Megan, for everything that you've done. The other thing that we decided is that so that it would not be such a burden on everyone, but we would have no more than five recipients. So we could have zero to five recipients. In this go-around, we actually have five recommended recipients. And so as part of the resolution, as part of the process, they're coming in front of you today, just to give you a little recap of how they're going to spend these dollars. And then they will also be available at the county council meeting at the end of the month to do the exact same thing.
Imagine if I hadn't have short version. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Chelsea?
Sure. Um, good morning. My name is Chelsea Branfield. I'm the Student Support Services Director, Coordinator, excuse me, at Dunlitt School Corporation. And we are so grateful and excited for this opportunity. Um, a majority of our, the funding and money is going to go towards our school-based prevention and education, um, to working and supporting our students. Um, we talked a lot about supporting student mental health and how that can lead, um, to substance use disorders. So we really want to focus on, um, helping students have the educational components that they need, as well as working on developing a diversion program for students who have experienced, um, some of these things. So we, again, really appreciate, appreciate your support and, um, look forward to getting this going.
Hi, I am Jessica Luth. I'm with The Caring Place. Um, again, we would like to say thank you, too. This is a, a big deal for us. Um, we have, over the last, um, four or five years, been partnering with Porter Stark in women's recovery. And we have, um, built a really strong women's recovery program. And this money is really going to aid, um, the services we provide for our clients. Um, transportation, uh, uh, group services, aftercare, continuum of care, amazing things for our clients. So this is a, this is a wonderful thing for us, and we can't say thank you enough.
How you doing? I'm Jake, uh, Manhu, Portage Recovery Association. I've been president there for over eight years. And, uh, we just recently received a donation for a new fifteen thousand square foot facility in the heart of Portage on Luth Road. And this money is going to go towards the recovery world concept, which is making sure that any addict that walks into our doors has every opportunity to succeed, not only from, uh, a twelve-step, uh, concept, but also through, uh, faith-based organizations, through one-on-one counseling. We want to use some of this money for a resource area to, uh, yeah, people can fill out job applications or update their resumes. We want to build a library. We want to build a fitness area. We want to build a fire pit. We want to build a volleyball court. A lot of things that are all-inclusive with health and well-being, and some of this could go towards potentially bringing in some professionals. But the idea is to keep things free for our people. So this is going to go a long way, because a lot of people that walk into our doors, they have not. So to give them all these tools that they can use to go forward is just like an amazing opportunity, and I'm beyond grateful. And thank you guys again for doing this for us. We appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Alan Gersula. I'm the executive director of Three Twenty Recovery, and thank you all for the support. Um, what we will do with this funds is we will continue to grow and expand multiple pathways to recovery, including our art, music, fitness, faith, nutrition, all at no cost to members of the community, as well as a program called Brain Paint at no cost to any of, of our participants. And just, as Jake was saying, continue to try to remove barriers and meet people where they're at. So, thank you all.
Did you want to speak to Marine House?
Um, yeah, um, I don't see Mr. O'Connor here. Uh, they applied for, uh, some house repairs and projects within the house, um, to just make, make it more lively and a nice, nicer place for the guys to live. They, um, uh, have meant sober living there, so, um, for house repairs and, uh, remodeling. So, um, so the committee feels that, uh, these recommendations reflect our commitment to combating, uh, the opioid crisis locally and on a variety of levels. These organizations make a significant difference in the Porter County communities, um, in addressing that epidemic. So.
Yeah, I mean, in, you know, a lot of ways, you're doing lifting that if you weren't there to do, probably fall on us to do. However, one of the things I did want to bring up today is to ask the auditor's office, are we, do we track how this, these monies are being spent as we, we release them?
We are handling it the same way we handled our bill. Okay, so they have a process in order for them to be reimbursed. And documentation that needs to be filled out.
Well, God bless all of you for doing what you do. It's not easy, not easy work. I'm glad that, uh, you know, that county government can help, so.
Well, I'd like to move that we approve these awards as listed on the agenda for the five recipients.
Second, we have a motion as well as a second for approval of the funds, uh, being released this morning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for what you do for the community.
That little boy's already better looking, though, man.
I know.
Much better looking. We have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund forty-six zero seven for the settlement and payment of, uh, of the two thousand and twenty-four general obligation bond. Second reading.
I move we approve.
Second, we have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, we have an ordinance establishing non-reverting fund forty-six oh eight for the construction and management of the two thousand and twenty-four general obligation bond. Second reading.
I move we approve.
Second, we have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the insurance process, uh, to restore buildings. First reading. I love these. These, these are some of my special things to do. Okay, I will have to, or, uh, commissioners will close our, our meeting and open it up to a public meeting to allow comment. Uh, someone would like to comment, either opposing or supporting, uh, this particular, uh, uh, ordinance. I close the commissioners' meeting, open up to a public meeting. I will start out with asking, is there anybody wanting to come up and speak in opposition of this ordinance? Second call, is there anyone wanting to come before the board of commissioners to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to step forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting, open back up to the commissioners' meeting, and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance establishing non-reverting fund in eleven twenty for insurance proceeds to restore buildings on first reading.
Second, we have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have an MOU between the commissioners, Portage Township Assessor for, Assessor for Property Audit Services.
You want to, this is?
This, um, this MOU would, would have the Portage Township Assessor utilizing the same consultants and or experts hired, uh, by the Porter County Commissioners as recommended by the Porter County Assessor. Uh, these are the consultants and experts that would engage in this with appraisals of, or assessment of real and personal property, including personal property tax audits. Each office would maintain their separate statutory responsibilities. And the work completed potentially by the consultants or the experts, uh, shall be borne by the offices, individual offices that needed the work to be completed.
Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the MOU between the commissioners and the Portage Township Assessor for Property Audit Services.
Second, we have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have a Civic Plus Munich Code LLC, a full-service supplement, uh, supplementation subscription for the codification of Porter County's ordinances in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars with a ten percent yearly increase.
Do you want to explain this, Scott?
The codification through Civics Plus is what ha- holds our county code. And as the commissioners, as we just did, add funds and ordinances, uh, or make changes to our municipal code, then this is where the repository is, and this is where the online access is for the citizens to be able to get on and read, uh, the individual code sections that apply throughout the county. Last year, I believe we did this on a per-page basis, and I believe the total cost at the end of the year was significantly higher, around four times as high as this potential yearly cost. So while the ten percent yearly increase is obviously something to look at, I do think overall, being under a subscription, uh, for the Munich Code through Civil, uh, Civics, Civic Plus will be ultimately a, uh, money saver, uh, as opposed to the, by page that we did last year. And we just never know how many ordinances we're going to do in a year, because the ordinances are based upon, we're reacting to, that we're dealing with as, uh, county business.
As with any of our contracts, if we feel the need that we need to go in a different direction, it's not a big.
Correct.
Okay. It's not a big issue to cancel the contract. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the full-service supplementation subscription with Civic Plus Munich Code LLC in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars with a ten percent yearly increase.
Second, we have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have a request by Tim Stoner to continue renting approximately ten acres on, uh, State Road Two for farming. Twenty twenty-five, Mr. Stoner has given the county a check in the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars for two thousand and twenty-four.
I move that we approve.
Second, we have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, GIS two thousand and twenty-five strategic plan. Good morning.
Good morning. All right. So you guys should have gotten, uh, an attachment with the agenda that looks like this. So I'm Candace Arv, and I'm an employee benefits advisor with GIS, General Insurance Services. Uh, we've been a consultant to the county for a number of years. Um, and when we originally stepped into that role, we built and deployed a strategic plan that was aimed at optimizing the employee benefits program from both a member quality of life perspective, but then also for cost effectiveness and cost efficiencies. Uh, so we have a panel in place that meets monthly, uh, to review the agenda, just kind of step through those line items. So we're here today just seeking approval, uh, on these line items to be reviewed and evaluated in those meetings. As you see, we have, uh, four key focused areas, one of which being plan design, the other employee engagement, provider management, and health plan administration. Uh, so I've provided the outline. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, more specifically, some members of our panel have received email communications, uh, regarding alternative healthcare options. These are line items under Health Plan Administration, numbers six, seven, and eight, uh, towards the bottom. And we'd like to gauge whether or not these are of interest for the panel to educate ourselves on and explore. Um, they do have a relatively long runway for implementation, so it'd be nothing to really consider for two thousand and twenty-six, but more for the future.
The one thing, we already made a huge, huge shift in moving to the HSA. And so I know, uh, people are always knocking on our door, asking us to look at different options. Uh, that was a really big shift and change for, for our employees. And if we try to do something right now, I think this might just be kind of overlooked at this point. And so I would recommend that we can keep these three on the list, but let's revisit this next year. That would just be my recommendation. Okay?
What's your recommendation, Barb?
That we just, that we hold off that discussion until a year from now, because we want to let the dust settle a little bit on us shifting to the HSA. And that was a really big shift for a lot of our employees.
Absolutely. The strategic plan is a living, breathing document, just to make sure that we don't lose sight of anything. We're able to kind of move strategies around as, you know, obviously the commissioners see fit, uh, because certain members did receive specific email correspondence on these things. Just wanted to bring it to attention, answer any ques- questions you guys might have, and see how you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I was one of the panelists that received, uh, uh, an email from somebody that I shared with Candace, so.
Is there any, is there any, uh, if we were to hold off as, as Barb has recommended, is there any negative, uh, impact?
Um, no, there's really no negative impacts. Those strategies are, you know, ever evolving, right? And so just keep in mind that, again, the implementation and kind of time, timeframe, right? So the runway to deploy certain solutions is relatively lengthy. That's why we typically start in Q two, exploring anything, you know, for future years. In Q two, three, Q four, we're generally busy with the renewals, um, you know, open enrollment. We're doing benefit fairs, promoting the Poco Wellness Program, and things like that.
And these would represent radical changes to the plan. So that's why I'm really hesitant for us at this point to consider something that would radically change the plan.
Agreed. So today, our health plan is under UMR. Uh, that's our third-party administrator. Their anthem, for example, is relatively comparable to what we have in place today. It would represent a network change, but it wouldn't have a drastic impact, whereas the other two solutions that were mentioned, uh, one being ICRA, an individual coverage health reimbursement arrangement, or a reference-based pricing plan, would definitely result in significant disruption. The, the county used to be on an, on a reference-based pricing plan, and it was not overly, um, admired by them.
And I know, Rhonda, and maybe, can you just come up? We had something like one of those two before, right? And did you just want to speak to, um, the issues that we had with that at the time? And I know things can change over time, but we didn't have the best, Rhonda, to you, we didn't have the best of experiences.
No, um, the reference-based pricing, the employees really don't know what they're, what the costs are. And so in the meantime, they're getting billed, and they don't know if they're supposed to pay that or not. Then they're getting turned into collections, and it's just total nightmare. It was, it's rather like, you know your insurance, you know what you're going to pay. You're going to pay, you know, twenty percent or you've reached deductible. You're not going to pay anything for the rest of the year. On the reference-based pricing, we didn't have that.
Yeah, so today we rent a network. With reference-based pricing, you don't rent a network. Instead, you set a reference price that the program would pay for certain services. So average nationally, network discounts are three hundred percent of Medicare. Reference-based pricing typically sets the bar below that. The issue being then, the difference is often billed to members, causing undue financial hardship. And some provider systems within, uh, Indiana have moved away from accepting reference-based pricing altogether, so it could also meant access points. So the reason you get those emails is because it, it can be a cost containment strategy, but it does come with significant disruption and potentially negative impact to member quality of life. So we just like to be very candid and transparent. It's not something that we would necessarily recommend, um, at this point in time, due to the reasons you said, Barb. Um, but again, we follow the lead of the commissioners and, and what you would like the, the panel to explore.
Yeah, you, you, you know, it's almost like when I, when I listen to, uh, presentations such as this, or, or, or had general conversation, not, not just with you, not, not with just GIS, but the, the industry itself, this just seems overly complicated.
Yeah.
And because of its over, because it's, it becomes so overly complicated, it's become overly expensive. I mean, we have, you know, I, I got a call the other day from, from, uh, a person participating on our, on our insurance. They charged her two hundred and fifty dollars just for the office visit, just for the office. She was in there for five minutes. And, but that's, I understand it, for industry-wise, that's typical, that price.
Yeah, for, again, there's a lot of factors that go into that, network discounts, the type of plan that you have. Um, that's why, uh, you know, the commissioners, you know, today and past, we've implemented things like the Franciscan Healthy Access Clinic, so that if it's a truly a primary care, acute care type of need, any and everything, uh, that the employees and their families go to the Franciscan clinic for is a hundred percent covered at no cost to them. Um, so.
I just, I just think that unless you're sitting laying on a surgical table, nobody's worth two hundred and fifty dollars every five minutes, so.
I certainly don't get out of bed to advocate for the insurance companies. I get out of bed to advocate for, you know, people like you and, and the people that we serve, so.
Uh, how long do you think it'll take you to complete all this?
Uh, so it's broken out by quarter, so we have things that we, we've begun tackling in Q one. So you guys heard from American Fidelity last, uh, commissioner meeting regarding, uh, dependent verification audit. So that's, again, a responsible, non-intrusive way to contain costs. Uh, we have strategies here for Q two, so we'll be reviewing our pharmacy benefit manager, our third-party administrator. Basically, GIS's role, um, as a consultant is really to hold our vendors accountable for the results that they have promised, and is to gauge the return on investment for the point solutions we have in place, to make sure that they're achieving our top two goals, which were enhancing member quality of life, you know, continuing access to care while containing costs in a responsible manner.
You know, you and I spoke at the beginning of the year, and I told you that, that, uh, I felt the commissioners and this, uh, you know, with the, with the assistance of GIS, we need to get a little more aggressive. I don't know what that means. I'm not the expert. You are. So you've got to figure out how to get more aggressive with our plan. Uh, just, you know, try to stay in front of it, because it's, it's going to continue to get more expensive. It's just, I mean, I don't have to be in the business to see that. I mean, you see it. It's all over the country.
Although I do have to acknowledge, GIS, they've really, really kept our increases well below the, the national average, so.
But they got another gear, Barb. Trust me.
Yeah, and some gears are comfortable, right? Comes in the form of a dependent verification audit, making sure those on our plan are truly, truly eligible. Um, and you know, so one of the things we do is if, if a spouse has access to qualified, um, group, you know, coverage through their own employer, we ask that they take their own employer's plan as primary, uh, prior to or instead of coming on to the county plan. So, you know, we're verifying that all the dependents on the plan are in fact supposed to be there and, you know, causing that bill. So again, some strategies are kind of low-hanging fruit, not as, they don't, they don't cost as much discomfort to the employees. Others, such as reference-based pricing, it's sometimes can feel like you're pulling the rug out. So it's the pro and con of what are we sacrificing, you know, for the amount of savings, and what is that right balance?
Well, you know, the thing of it is, is, you know, we've come to, uh, bend in the road here in county government. We're going to have to make some tough decisions over, in the next twelve months, sometime within the next twelve months, certainly, I would hope. As to how we're going to, you know, uh, bring more resources into county government to service, you know, programs like, such as this, so, you know, um.
Well, the one thing.
That may mean at the end of the day, that employees do feel more pinch. Uh, that may be. It just is what it is. But we cannot, you know, with everything else going around us that affects how we do business here, whether it's the high inflation, the higher, uh, salary costs, uh, we don't, you know, we, we haven't touched income taxes in our county in twenty years. We don't, you know, I can go on and on. It's just, we're going to have to make, there's some, we're going to have to make some tough decisions here, so.
Understood. The one thing we haven't seen yet, because we just implemented it, is switching. Understood. The one thing we haven't seen yet, because we just implemented it, is switching everybody a hundred percent to the HSA plan. And we don't know what that is gonna mean to our bottom line yet. We haven't seen it. So it'll be really good to see what kind of an effect that is having.
So Candace, so you're basically outlining here that in Q two, on provider management of this year, that's when we are going to be reviewing our P B M, our T P A, and our quantum. So those are the, uh, we've got our prescriptions, we've got T P A, we're looking at U M R. And then on the quantum review, we're looking at the, 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 what's the word I'm looking for?
Air coordination.
Air coordination. All of those are going to be reviewed in Q two, based upon what we were supposed to be getting, what we got. That's when those pharmacy, the T P A, the U M Rs and everything is reviewed. So then in Q two, so that we're ready in Q three or four, if there's changes that need to be made, based upon that review. So I just want the commissioners to understand this. If whatever we, the commissioners adopt today, that's what this subgroup is going to be rolling their sleeves up and working through on this schedule, uh, showing Q two, I mean, Q one, two, and three, as we go through this year. And then I'm assuming that monthly, uh, as we go along, the completed side will be updated and that would could be sent up to the commissioners as a whole to keep track of what the subgroup is doing. But ultimately, I believe what G I S, G I S is asking is, is this approved to work through, uh, by that subcommittee? Um, and then so everybody knows what's being reviewed and what's up on tap to be looked at.
Is this, uh, this work that you would be doing here, if we approve it? Is this outside of your contract with us? I mean, are, are you billing us for this?
It's included in our consulting agreement. So the whole strategic plan, everything that we do, the evaluation of the vendors and no additional cost.
This is their job.
Yes. We've been at this, so. Yeah, we continually have been going through this process over the last three or four years. And to Barb's point, that's why our program is trending below national average. And we've truly had some, you know, great success stories. Um, one of those pinches was the moving of everybody to the HSA plan last year. Because as a panel, we evaluated and determined that the cost of a member on the HSA plan annually was significantly lower than one on the copay plan. So that was.
At one point in time, our individuals from the outside notified that there will be bidding in the process to see if the county can get better product, better services, and then at one point in time through the strategic, strategic process.
Yeah, so there's various components to our plan. So we have an unbundled, self-funded program. Um, we have guardrails in place to ensure financial sustainability. That's through our stop-loss program. Our stop-loss reinsurance renews on October first of every year. So we go out to bid for that roughly a hundred and twenty days in advance. Um, we bid that out every year, um, and we take the most competitive offer. So as a panel, we don't decide in those monthly meetings on any changes. We decide what, in this example, stop-loss should be recommended. And then we come back before a public meeting to present before the commissioners to get formal approval.
And the stop-loss numbers is the, uh, in, in our, in our current cases, what is it, one seventy-five or fifty? Uh, that, the county's responsible for first a hundred and fifty, first a hundred and seventy-five, which was.
Correct. It's, uh, I don't have it in front of me today. I do believe it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So what stop-loss does is it protects us from catastrophic claims. So those million-dollar claims from, you know, the cancers and the transplants and things like that, the, the county's liability is capped at, you know, per person. And, but then it's also capped on an aggregate level to prevent us from, you know, death by a thousand cuts, so to speak.
And that may, you know, on its face seem really great for the county. But when you're talking about, but we have eleven hundred, twelve hundred people on our program, it don't take long for that to jump to millions. You know, if you're, you stay under the stop-loss, it's still gonna jump to millions.
Well, that's why we have an aggregate as well. So we, per each person, we can spend no more than the ceiling. And then as a whole, we can spend no more than, than the aggregate. So that's how we're able to budget and finance, uh, within reason and in, while ensuring financial sustainability.
Have you heard whether or not that aggregate is, is likely to go up?
Um, so, I mean, it goes back to actuarial analyses and underwriting and.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. There you go, it's too.
Right.
Give us an answer.
I mean, subject to the risk that exists within the population, our stop-loss premium.
See, that's where, that's where they get us, you know, they got.
But rest assured.
Commissioners, I do think when we look at health plan administration at the bottom box, you look at six, seven, and eight. There's been lots of talk about these things. There's lots of, um, people attempting to sell these things. I'm not sure we, I would recommend biting all three off. But I do think potentially having the group explore and understand one of those options, I, I don't think is a bad thing for the.
I agree, Scott.
You could pick whether it's seven or eight. I'm assuming six is, is that just a pure unbundled format for Anthem? Me, meaning it's a, we buy the Anthem product bundled?
So Anthem has a bundled product. They also have.
That what you were angling at for six, or was it a different Anthem product?
Correct. So it would be U M R as our third-party administrator today. We would ask Anthem, what would their rates be to be our third-party administrator?
We're, we're probably gonna do a little bit of that when we look at our T P A review in quarter two. So I would suggest the commissioners decide on between seven and eight. Reference-based is eight, and the individual health plans is seven. I, I think the, uh, the commissioner's office through this committee, educating itself on those options so that we know what they are, so that when we are approached, uh, in public or by email, we have some understanding of what those plans are and how they work. Um, cause it's, we're always gonna have to be considering things. Part of it is understanding the plan and how it either does or doesn't work with our people. So I, I think one of them at least should be bitten off this year to make sure we have a full understanding of what that would be as an option.
Which one would you recommend, Candace, if we were to look at one of them?
I would say ICRA's are gaining in popularity, while reference-based pricing is, you know, again, being kind of pushed out of the market through other strategies, um.
And, and we already have a scar of trying the reference-based in its format of that time period, in fairness. Whatever that format was in that time period, we tried it. It may not have been the best fit for us. So we have tried that. And so maybe the ICRA would be a good one. We, we don't have any experience with that or a fundamental understanding of how that works, so.
Yeah. And, you know, to be clear, we don't advocate for any particular plan, product, solution. We advocate for the county and for the taxpayers and the people that you serve. And so we bring this, you know, kind of to the table to evaluate, educate ourselves, explore, and ultimately, you know, make a recommendation based on what the needs are of our people and our budget.
Okay. Barb, you wanna make a recommendation?
Sure. Well, then, I move that we approve this strategic plan and that we include number seven under the health plan administration, but for this year, we strike out number eight.
Second.
We have a, uh, we have a motion for approval, as stated by Commissioner Rickness. We also have a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, commissioners.
Skilman Projects. The jail and the highway. We'll start with the jail.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks.
Morning. Uh, we have two items for the jail project. Uh, the first item being Corellis Roofing Pay Application Number Six in the amount of five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Five hundred and twenty-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
I move that we approve pay-up number six.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Uh, item number two for the jail is, uh, on March fourth, we opened bids, uh, for, uh, the interior renovations project, um, which is basically phase two for the jail. Uh, we had twenty-one bidders across seven bid categories. What I handed you was the award recommendation letter, um, stating all the contractors that were low-based bid. And, uh, we completed an alternates meeting with, uh, some of the Porter County staff, along with jail staff, uh, reviewing all the alternates that were available to us. Uh, at this time, Skilman is recommending the base bid and alternates one, three, five, six, seven, and eight. Uh, alternate seven and eight are a euro cost to the county. They're just, uh, manufacturers that were suggested, that were preferred by the jail staff. And number eight is precision controls, um, for all our automation systems. Before we, uh, with the, uh, the temperature controls, the automation, the temperature control system. Joe, you have, you have an issue with that?
No, that's our recommendation.
Okay. So that recommendation comes from you? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought it was jail staff that were recommending that. Just wanted to make sure. Any, any questions by the board? No?
I move that we approve the, um, bid recommendations from Skilman for, uh, the jail, phase two.
Second. We have a motion for approval, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Highway.
Highway Department, uh, four pay applications here. You've got Gary Up Golf, Bloomfield Mechanical, and Circle R Mechanical.
I move that we approve the four pay-ups with Gary Up Construction, pay-up number three in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-five, with pay-up number one with Golf in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-two. Pay-up number two with Bloomfield Mechanical in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. And pay-up number six with Circle R Mechanical in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We have a motion of, for approval, as read by Commissioner Rickness, as well as a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, uh, real quick, uh, what do you guys, what's your target date now with the garage for completion? Overall completion, we're still shooting for October. Um, but right now, we were pushed back based on some submittals for, uh, the overall building manufacturer. But we're trying to catch up here. We're hoping to finish the administration maintenance and the truck parking by August and then turn over to the, uh, maintenance garage. So before the snow starts flying? Yes. Yeah, great. That's super.
Unless it starts snowing in October.
Well, thank you for the job you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Facilities. Joseph. Barb, you wanna, uh, go ahead, uh, uh, Joe, one through five.
So you have before you today, uh, professional services agreement with American Structure Point. This is for the, uh, design services for the exterior concrete work on the front and back of one fifty-seven Franklin. This is to, uh, waterproof that area as well as to provide, um, um, correct ADA access to the building.
And this is also one fifty-five voter.
Correct. This is for one fifty-seven and one fifty-five.
Okay.
Is voters' entrance and the one fifty-seven access.
Uh, we'll take these one at a time.
Yeah. I move that we approve the proposal for professional engineering services with American Structure Point in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars for one fifty-five slash one fifty-seven Franklin Street.
Second. We have a motion, uh, for approval, as read by Commissioner Rickness, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Second item is for, uh, all-phase electric. These are for the, um, seven LED packs for the, uh, wall lighting at the J D C building. Our staff will be replacing these.
I move that we approve the request to purchase seven LED wall packs with all-phase electric in the amount of one thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and five cents.
Second. We have a motion for approval, as read by, uh, Commissioner Rickness, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
The next item is, uh, for design services for, um, the J D C building. This is for D L Z to provide services to design out and spec out what we're going to be using to, uh, restore and reconstruct the showers over at the J D C.
I move that we.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I move that we approve the, um, request for architectural engineering services with D L Z for the shower upgrades at the J D C in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. We have a motion, as read, uh, by Commissioner Rick for approval. All those in favor say aye, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Next item is for Burglum Construction. This is for a proposal to, um, do some repair work that is kind of a, uh, critical, um, issue. The J D C staff has asked us to get this done right away. Uh, we agree that this is a very important, um, part of getting that done, so we wanted to get this done right away.
I move that we approve the proposal to repair the loading dock at the J D C with Burglum Construction in the amount of thirty-four thousand, eighty dollars.
And for, just for the record, if I may, uh, we did get a, a second quote from Gary Up. They were, um, lower, however, with the additions that were, were, they recommended Burglum. Um, it actually is a better improvement, so that's why it's a little bit higher. But they were actually, their, their base quote was a little bit lower.
So this is, this is an emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
It needs to get done right away because it's, it's a danger to the staff and to the people that are using it.
Go ahead, Barb, if you can get a motion.
I made the motion.
Second. We have a motion, uh, for approval, as read by Commissioner Rickness, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So the next item is with, uh, K two construction. Um, this was a quote for the, uh, offices. As you may recall, we approved the flooring and the, uh, council has approved the additional appropriations for all of this. So this is before you today for approval, in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight thirty-three ninety-one.
I move that we approve the quote to renovate the four offices on the fifth floor of the cardhouse for victim assistance with K two construction in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second. We have a motion for approval, as read by Commissioner Rickness, as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Finally, if I had one, one final thing. Um, as the commissioners are aware, that, um, it was reported previously that there was a catastrophic, catastrophic water incident that impacted the election department at one fifty-five Franklin three weeks ago on February sixteenth. This left the staff, um, displaced and public access to the building impossible. Um, staff has been working, um, with the insurance carrier, their consultant, and mitigation company to get rid of, or to get the water cleaned up and the damage, uh, removed, um, so as not to oppose, uh, further deterioration of the building. Um, additionally, the election department staff has been working with the insurance carrier's consultant and our vendor to coordinate testing for the electronic equipment, uh, which was impacted by this event. In order to efficiently achieve this, all of our voter equipment will be taken off-site to a secure location with the approval of our insurance carrier and the Board of Elections. Um, as we begin this process of restoration, I'm asking that the county board of commissioners formally declare this an emergency so that we can move ahead as efficiently and effectively as possible. Um, delays could impact the twenty-twenty-six election cycle, um, continue to, to disrupt our staff and cause additional financial hardship to the county in general.
Scott, what, what does that mean exactly if we do that?
When this board finds itself in the position that it needs to approve work to be completed, mitigate the disaster, and we are not within a timeframe to be able to follow the bid or quote law, then this board will have to formally declare an emergency, uh, at that location, which would allow this board to circumvent the bid and quote requirements and to be able to, uh, go down to the standard within the statute, which, Joe, it's actually in, uh, thirty-six, one, twelve, nine. The state also has something similar up in Title V, but in Title thirty-six, we're looking at the one for us. This board then declares the emergency, which gets, you know, if something is actually in danger, then you, you.
emergency, which gets, you know, if something is actually in danger, then you, you can't do it, this board would have to come to the next meeting, uh, formally, uh, have a motion that we have an emergency, and we could retroactively, um, approve certain invoices, um, however, if the statute, even in the emergency standpoint, the statute still is looking for some version that we are attempting to keep costs down, so they're still wanting two quotes unless the emergency is such that we can't even get that, so as we go through this process, we're going to have to be careful, there are some things that are truly emergency and we need to go right now, and there are some things that they are in a hurry, but we need to get to the next meeting.
Right.
We, we can't, let, let's put it this way, we can't have everything that's completed and fixed at one fifty-seven done under emergency, it may be an emergency today, but things happening in August shouldn't be an emergency, does that make sense?
It, it, absolutely.
Okay, so we're just going to have to go through it as the individual issues come on.
Everybody understand that? Do you still gotta get prices?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Alright.
And I, I sent out just a, a quick draft of the scope of work, but we're still working on that, but just to kinda keep you guys in the loop on that.
Okay, I think you do.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Carrie, uh, we have a request for Recycling District to host the tire collection event on Saturday, May third, and Saturday, October eleventh at the Porter X.
I move that we approve.
Second, we have a motion, uh, made by Commissioner Rigness to approve as well as a second by, uh, Morales, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Now, just real quick, nobody needs to be bringing car batteries, or this is just tires?
It'll also be during our household hazardous waste event, so we have a tire collection and you can bring car batteries as well, this is a new format the state now requires that when you have a tire.
Shouldn't we announce that, our motion, that it's not just car, it's not just tires?
Well, okay, so what the.
batteries?
That what the tire amnesty the state requires, whenever you do, a solid waste district collects tires, the owner of the land must give us permission to be on-site strictly just for tires, so.
So, again, are we collecting just tires?
No, we are, it'll be a hazardous waste and a tire collection event, and we have announced.
There we go.
January thirtieth, we've been announcing it for the past two months.
Tires and household hazardous waste.
Correct, and new this year.
And car batteries.
Car batteries and paint, all paint, so, all those people who say they can't get rid of paint.
Super.
Seven events.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, have a wonderful sunny day.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Well, I, we need a, did you motion?
We already approved it.
Stormwater Development Management, Mike Jabel, Director. You got some guests with you today.
I do. Uh, first order of business is second reading of an ordinance for a zoning map amendment according to the UDO, petitioner is Timothy and Ginger Murphy pertaining to the southeast corner of Lot Seventy-Five in Marion Acres subdivision Porter Township, which, uh, a little clarity is the Lake Eliza area, from high intensity commercial CH and residential lake district to low density single-family district R-one, it did come with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, and this is your second reading.
And I'm assuming that this is Timothy and Ginger Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
I move that we approve the ordinance for a zoning map amendment of the UDO, uh, for the southeast corner of Lot Seventy-Six Marion Acres subdivision Porter Township from high intensity commercial district and residential lake district to low density single-family residential district R-one on second reading.
Second, we have a motion for approval as read by Commissioner, uh, Rigness as well seconded by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Good luck with your home.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Mike.
Second item. Make sure we're on the same.
Yep, second item, N dot change order zero, zero.
By making sure your list is the same as mine, bridge number one thirty-one, Honey Road Two Hundred West over Damon Run, this is an N dot project, change order number two, this finalizes, uh, the items, so it's a final change order balancing all the contract, uh, the end result is an increase of the project to seventy-seven thousand, five twenty-six point zero four.
I have a question on this one, it just said quantities changed, what was, it didn't really say what the reason was like the second one did, but this one didn't really get the reason other than that quantity.
We need to go into the weeds, Martin's here, but usually when you end a project, they're bid on bid items, it's not a lump sum.
Yeah.
Sometimes you overrun, underrun, and sometimes you balance out, I assume there was extra work as well?
I hope so.
I'm Bob Jack, Highway Engineer. Uh, yes, so the, we had, on bridge, uh, piling, so when your feed increased over the project, and then there were some, uh, soils that were encountered in the project as well, and then in addition, just throughout the project, uh, some of the, like, changes that after they were mentioned in the field, so.
This, so this is just accumulation of all that?
Correct.
Okay, I move that we approve change order zero, zero, two, final quantity adjustment.
Go ahead, Barb, go ahead.
Oh.
He just wanted.
In the amount of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and four cents for Bridge One Thirty-One, County Road Two Hundred West over Damon Run, uh, with a new contract total of one million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty dollars and fifty cents.
Second, we have a motion for approval made by Commissioner Rigness, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Morales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Michael?
Bridge number one sixty-eight Brummett Road over Little Calumet River, again, another N dot project. Change order number nine, which also finalized construction cost association, associated with the project significantly, uh, speaking, this was the utility delay, this is the project on, if somebody remember on Brummett Road that was closed for a lengthy period of time.
Oh, yes.
And so this is the settlement through the N dot claim process, the contractor filed a claim that went through local level and went through the district level and ended up in their central office in Indianapolis, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents was the final claim, contractor occurred due to delay in the project, uh, we have identified that there was a utility delay, maybe some other factors, we are investigating those and coming back, and we hope to, in the future, recoup this amount for the cause of delay, that was not our fault.
Okay, I move that we approve change order zero, zero, nine in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents to finalize contract costs associated with the utility delay settled by N dot, the N dot claim resolution for Bridge One Sixty-Eight Brummett Road over Little Calumet River with a new contract total of two million, eight hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and eight cents.
Second, we have a motion for approval as made by Commissioner, uh, Rigness and seconded by Commissioner Morales, um, I'm gonna hold it here, discussion, who's on, on the line for this, us or N dot?
Contract, I'll let Martin explain the details in the field, but the contract we signed with N dot, we have to settle all claims with the project according to our agreement with N dot, after we do that, then it's up to us, cause of our contract or our relationship with other people, that we have to go after that, not N dot.
Okay, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Number four?
Next two items kinda go hand in hand, we're gonna make a revision apply here, but we have these annual contracts with consult, various consultants, both in transportation and in stormwater, for as needed task orders throughout the year, in front of you, you've got a, uh, a men- annual on-call agreement from USI Consultants Inc. for professional engineering services right-of-way and construction services, task orders issued on a case-by-case basis about through the end of the year, uh, originally, we said not to exceed a hundred thousand, after talking with Commissioner's staff, we'd like to reduce that to five thousand dollars, uh, to complete an open task order we got, which is item number five, which I'll talk about next.
So, do we need to do both of these then?
You can do first the agreement.
Okay.
Item four.
I move that we approve the annual on-call agreement for professional engineering survey and right-of-way and construction services with USI Consultants, agreement valid through the end of twenty-twenty-five, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion as, uh, read by Commissioner, uh, Rigness for approval as well as a second by Morales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion.
Then item five is with USI Consultants, this is a task order one B, they assisted us with item number three up there as far as the claim procedure for the Brummett Road Bridge, this is for, uh, services already rendered plus to tidy up the thing, and then their assignment will be done shortly.
I move that we approve the on-call services task order one B with USI Consultants for assistance and documentation for Bridge One Sixty-Eight utility delay issues, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion, uh, for approval as read by Commissioner, uh, or as made by Commissioner Rigness, uh, seconded by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved, are we gonna, we gonna? Open that back up?
We can, we have two other consultants already, but we can't add another one.
Okay.
Last item, I'll let Martin explain, this is a specialty piece of equipment that he and his staff need to do their duties.
Uh, well, this has, uh.
Oh, I still got one more, I apologize.
I think that might have been last.
That was last time.
Yeah, so, uh, six is not, we're not addressed.
No, that, we aren't, and our.
We have another number six.
Oh, yes, it's actually for, uh, an equipment purchase, the OJER Two Pro measuring tool for laying out, uh, internal construction projects, so our project manager, uh, would be using this to measure materials in the field, you know, uh, any excavations that we perform and then material that he needs to order to fulfill the work that he has to do, uh, this is, uh, not as sophisticated as the GPS equipment for survey that we use, this is more of a, a contractor-grade unit, so that way him or his superintendent or a bridge foreman can use, uh, any of these tools as well to measure any materials.
You don't have to be certified.
Correct, this is more intuitive and app-based.
I move that we approve, um, what was just described in the amount of eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Second, we have a motion for approval, that's a motion by Commissioner Rigness, seconded by Commissioner Morales, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign, motion approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Have a good morning.
You too. Uh, we've come to, uh, part of our meeting where is there anyone, any other matter which, uh, may properly come before the Board of Commissioners, anyone like to speak to the Board of Commissioners? We appreciate that, nobody wants to speak to us? We're recessed, thank you.